Good evening, everybody. I would like to call the order and reconvene the City Council meeting for Tuesday, February 16th. For the City of Angels Camp earlier tonight, we met at 5:30 and closed session. And so, tonight, we'll start with our public session. Would you please stand and join me in a pledge to the flag? We're here to my left.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as is for all.
As I stated before, earlier tonight, we had a closed session relating to, okay, existing litigation dealing with existing lawsuit from the Deview, Coletta, Rosado, and Turco parties versus the City of Angels Camp and the City of Angels Landscaping Lighting District. And the outcome of that meeting was additional direction was given to our city attorney. The next item is the approval of the agenda. I would first ask, is there any member of the council or staff that wants to amend the agenda in any way? Okay. Is there anyone in the public that has a request for us to amend the agenda in any way? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve as submitted.
So moved.
Okay. Okay. Moved by Councilman Bee Hill, seconded by Councilman Soban. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. The next item is staff updates. Each member of the council has received a detailed staff report on various activities. Is there any member of the council that has any questions or comments relating to the staff report? Okay. I don't see any. I just have a couple. And there are more comments than anything else to, is there a police chief here? I just wanted to compliment you on that nice tribute to our service dog Turner. It was very nice, and he served his city well. I had another comment relating to the report of the museum, and I just think it's a great idea that our museum director, Kimarth, has with the idea of creating this passport concept to Calaveras history and to encourage visitors to attend all five of our museums distributed throughout the county. And again, I think that's just one more example of what a good job she's doing for the city. And then, my final comments deal with, or questions deal with the information contained in the complaint log. One of them deals with the complaint about speeding on Amador Avenue. And apparently, Police Department and Public Works is looking into the idea of installing a stop sign. Just my own personal opinion. I have yet to see any kind of documentation where stop signs are any effective deterrent to speeding. They simply delay everybody moving through the streets in an expeditious fashion. So, anyway, I would be encouraged to see if you could look at some other means rather than just installing arbitrary stop signs. My last item deals with the Load Hotel. I see, since we started our code enforcement proceedings back in November, we've been working at this for some five months, and it looks like we're finally going to get the property owner to a meeting later on this week. Is Dave Hanneman in the audience?
Actually, I'll confirm that the appointment is scheduled for this Friday.
Okay. Well, that's encouraging, and I would certainly be happy to, have you reported a later date that progress is made and that you're well on our way to getting the hotel fixed up.
And if there are any delays in that meeting, I will also report that, as we will take additional action, because it has been going on for too long.
Yep. The next item is council updates, and I'll start to my left with Vice Mayor Follendorf.
No comment.
Okay. Councilman Soban?
Okay. On February 3rd, I attended Council of Governments, Cog, for Vice Mayor Amanda as an alternate. On February 7th, I very much enjoyed watching the Broncos win the Super Bowl. And on the 12th, I attended a workshop where a professor from the University of Arizona talked to people associated with water, conveyance, water, storage, and other issues related to our water situation. And the primary discussion centered around analytical models used to forecast what should be allowed for a particular period of time, and then the procedural models with regard to how that could be applied better by our government, or the water department.
Okay. That was it. Councilman Bee Hill?
Yes, I attended Destination Angels Camp meeting, and the main force of that is usual is to work on economic development, and particularly try to reach out to the individual property owners, especially in the downtown area, to see what we can do about giving some movement on those buildings.
Councilman Morris?
I have nothing to report.
And I likewise, on the 3rd of February, attended Calaveras Council of Government meetings, as well as on the 11th, I attended the Destination Angels Camp meeting, and I don't have anything further to add to Councilman Bee Hill's comment. So, moving right along, the next item is public comment. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on a matter not on the agenda. State law prohibits that the City Council from acting on matters not listed on the agenda. Matters raised by the public will be automatically referred to staff and placed on the next meeting. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to address the council on an item not on tonight's agenda? So, please step to the podium. Yes?
Bob Rogers, 677 Smith Flat Road. First of all, as a former museum director here, I also congratulate what Kim has done at the museum, and it's been wonderful. She's done a wonderful job there. So, I second your earlier comments. I'm here tonight to tell you of a series of programs my wife and I are going to go, we've been going to put on, which we've been asked to do, a series of four lectures on saving two famous naval ships. The USS Hornet, which we founded, the museum in Alameda, and also the battleship Iowa, which is now down in, at the port of Los Angeles. Judy and I are both founders, and we're very involved in starting these ships up, and we're going to give a lecture on how these ships came about. The first one, the Hornet, was quite a project, working through all the bureaucracies and everything. But the first thing we had to do was to file a restraining order against the United States Government and the US Navy to stop the scrapping of the ship. And you've got to come to the program to find out how we prevailed. But at any rate, there are very interesting programs regarding the exhibits we acquired from NASA and Smithsonian. And you all know the ship, because it was the ship that recovered Apollo 11 with Armstrong, Aldrin, and Collins. And that's why we have a lot of the artifacts from Smithsonian and NASA on the ship. But I just wanted to tell you about this alert YouTube program that will occur over two months. The first one is this Sunday. They are free, and they'll be very interesting. And I know that the veterans in this county and their families are very interested in this particular subject, along with other people. I also noticed that, I also know that people in this audience have visited the ship on numerous occasions, and I also know that many of the youth groups in this area has gone to the ship and stayed overnight on the ship. So, I'm just announcing this lecture series. It'll start on Sunday, 2 o'clock, and it'll run for about 60 days. Thank you.
Great.
Oh, and City Clerk Mary Kelly has flyers, which she'll pass out to the members of the council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pardon me? Where is it going to be? It's going to be at the Manzanita Art Emporium on the corner of Finnegan Lane and Highway 49, right across from Movie Theater on the corner.
Mary, can you move that microphone a little bit more towards, so it's closer to your mouth?
It's against it.
What?
It's already against it.
That's as close as it'll go? Okay. Maybe it's just me, but I find it difficult to hear for the speaker. So, when you do approach the podium, if you could snuggle up close to the mic, I think that would be helpful. Is there anybody else that wishes? Please, Sheri.
My name is Sheri Smith, and I reside at 3712 Glory Hole Road in Angels Camp. It's humbling to be up here and address you all, Mayor and City Council members. And I'd like to report that I spent the day at the special called Board of Supervisors meeting in San Andreas regarding cannabis reform, and they're still under deliberations. And it wasn't really my plan, but with such an audience here, I thought it was a good place to publicly announce that I am running for the district four seat on the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors. That would be our district. And I'm running because I recognize the important role that government has in determining our future. I am conservative by nature, supporting continued economic growth, agricultural production, and tourism, and in that order. I love Angels Camp and Calaveras County, and I look forward to chatting with you all.
Is there anybody else that wishes to address the council? Okay. Seeing none, I will close the public comment line item, and we'll move on to our consent agenda. We have three items on the consent agenda. Item A being approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of February 2nd. Item B, approval of Bruce Whittle Electric quote for HB blower installation for aeration basin. And item C is the rejection of bids received for Utica Park and Tryon Park upgrades. Is there any member of the council that wants to remove an item from the consent calendar?
I have a question to the minutes.
The minutes, okay. Okay. Is there any member of staff or member of the public that wants to speak or address an item on the consent agenda separately? So, with that, I will entertain a motion to approve items B and C. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Soban, seconded by Councilman Bee Hill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And with respect to item A, Councilman Bee?
Yes, the top of page two, under my comment, while I did attend the Integrated Regional Water Management Authority meeting, my discussion regarding the precarious water delivery stemmed from a UWPA meeting. And we talked about the flume structure.
Okay. Okay. Are there any further corrections or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve item A as amended.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Bee Hill.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Morris. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes unanimously. Moving right along, on our regular agenda, we have one item, which is a workshop concerning options for addressing medical marijuana cultivation. And before we actually start with that item, there's a few comments I'd like to make and explain kind of the procedural steps we're going to use as we address this item. This is a council workshop to try and reach consensus among the council regarding medical marijuana cultivation. The public will have an opportunity to address the council on this specific cultivation issue. This is not a discussion on the larger topic of marijuana laws in general, or the pros and cons of legalizing marijuana. So, I would ask all parties to limit our discussion to cultivation of medical marijuana. And when the public addresses the council, I'd ask that you address the council in its entirety, not specific members. This is also not an opportunity to engage our city attorney in discussions regarding legal opinions and so forth. And when you're invited to the podium, I would ask that you give your name and address. And if you live outside the city limits, we'd be interested in hearing that as well, and state why you are interested, why this item has interest to you. We will begin with the item being presented by our city attorney. The council will then have opportunity to ask questions of the city attorney on his presentation, and then we'll open it up to public comment. So, with that, I will turn the meeting over to City Attorney Derek Cole.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I've presented a staff report to the council to flesh out what I think is a menu of items. At the last meeting, the council, or two meetings ago, the council will recall that we were talking about a March 1 deadline, and the concern was that we needed to move quickly, because the feeling was that if we didn't have an ordinance in place and effective before March 1, we might lose the ability altogether to regulate the issue of cultivation. Since that meeting, the legislature has passed, and the governor has signed AB 21, which removes the March 1 deadline. So, it was my opinion that there really is not a basis for an urgency ordinance. In other words, an ordinance that we could adopt and take effect tonight, and then follow the urgency ordinance process, where we have to revisit it within 45 days, and then do multiple extensions. The thinking was that, let's instead use the time the legislature has given us to more thoughtfully consider what we started, the discussion we started at our last meeting. And so, if anyone is here at the last, or that was here at the last meeting, or any council members are wondering why we don't actually have an ordinance, it was because of the lifting of that March deadline, but also my feeling as a city attorney that I don't think we can justify an urgency ordinance. The concern is that there really isn't an urgency at this point. And so, in my opinion, legally speaking, it probably wasn't appropriate for us to go forward with that. So, what we have tonight is a workshop, and the staff report I've presented does outline some options. One thing I do want to clarify at the outset is that I know the county had a very big workshop today, and the county has been vetting through its own ordinance. It's important to recognize that city government and county government are different when it comes to cultivation, especially in rural counties. And I know that, having been a county council in a rural county, in a major growing county, where I actually wrote one of the earlier cultivation ordinances. And rural counties have a lot of space, they have a lot more access to resources, you have large lots that don't have the same living conditions as cities, where you have subdivisions, you have homes that are as small as an eighth or a quarter of an acre, you don't have the same setbacks, you don't have the same acreages and other things. So, one thing that I know probably all of you and many, many members of the public are watching what's going on in the county, I don't think that's really helpful to what we are dealing with in the city. Again, because of the dynamics, city government is residential, county government, while there are residential areas, often those are rural residential areas, and often the grow sites are growing on in conditions that are much different than what we find in cities. So, what I've tried to do is walk you through what I've seen in various city regulations. This is not to say that this is the only, there are off-menu items, if you will. I've tried to give you the menu, but the chef in the kitchen is willing to, you know, come up with some other dishes, if that's your pleasure. These are meant to be suggestions. And I'll walk through them quickly, so that we can get to the discussion and listen, discuss more, instead of listening to me talk. But one issue that is important, I think, for the council to address is, do you want to do indoor regulations, or do you want to just do outdoor regulations? And again, because we're in city territory, the indoor regulation issue is probably more important, because people will do more indoor grows in cities. Obviously, if you have five acres and you don't have any neighbors around you, it's much easier to, and much better growing conditions to grow outside. But if you're living in a small community, you're going to want to maximize your yield, and you're going to want to avoid sending the message to the world that you're growing. So, a lot of times, it's done indoors. That can create fire hazard issues, that can overtax public resources, and in particular, utilities. I know there are some contraptions and devices now that actually do cut down on the fire risk hazard, but you can't necessarily guarantee without some oversight that people will use those. So, that is something I think that's a threshold issue the council would want to consider, is do we want to just regulate outdoor, or do we want to do indoor, or do we want to do both? Then the next question really is, how do you, if you're going to regulate, going to outdoor, how do you regulate? Do you count plants? You know, six plants, you can have six plants, or six mature plants and six immature plants. You can have 12 plants, you can have one plant. That is probably the easiest way to regulate the issue, because you simply go and you look, and it's very easy to see the number of plants. The flip side is, oftentimes, plants, especially the yield of the plants, there's no single yield per plant. And, you know, grower, growing conditions are different, the skill of the growers are different, the type of plant, just like we have, you know, hundreds of varieties of tomatoes, there are literally hundreds of varieties of marijuana plants. And so, the type of plant will have different yields. I mean, just like any crop, the marijuana plant will vary, and the success that a grower will have will depend on many factors. And so, if you just count plants, you're not necessarily going to be going after any sort of yield. You may have a grower who can do in two plants what another grower at another site would need 20 plants to do. So, sometimes, at least from the industry standpoint, plant count is not as optimal. But from the city standpoint, it's probably the easiest thing to enforce, because your code enforcement officer simply makes it a quick determination, are there six plants or more, yes or no? Another way to measure is square footage. And so, this allows, you know, this gives a little bit more to the industry, the marijuana industry, because it allows them to, you know, use space more to their ability and to their liking, and it doesn't arbitrarily limit, arbitrarily might be their term, doesn't limit the number of plants that you can grow. It allows the grower to work with more, so to speak, and lets, if he can utilize 250 square feet or 500 square feet better than others, then he's advantaged by having square footage. A square footage is not as hard to measure. I mean, you need a measuring tape, basically, to, you know, if it's 250 square feet, that's not really hard to measure in the field, but it's a little bit harder than the number of plants. So, that's one issue. You have the indoor/outdoor issue, then you have, how do we measure? I've actually had one ordinance that, in a prior county I worked in, where we actually looked at canopy, and we measured the canopy of the tree, and we put spatial limits on how much canopy could exist. I will tell you, that was a very hard experience, because our code enforcement officer would literally spend hours trying to measure the canopy. So, one of the points I'll make at the end is that, from our standpoint, we have to remember, we have to enforce this ordinance, and we only have one code enforcement official. So, one of our concerns is having an ordinance that we can efficiently enforce, we can efficiently do the inspections, and if we have someone who has to spend, you know, hours in the field measuring, that might not be optimal. The next set of issues deals with setbacks. You obviously can have setbacks from neighbors. So, the idea being that the odors, or the appearance, or any sort of perceived nuisances, and I say perceived, not to suggest that nuisances are created, but the idea of zoning and setbacks is to keep things, you know, in one property from interfering with another. And so, setbacks from property lines is a very common way that cities regulate marijuana cultivation. And you could be 10 feet, 20 feet from the nearest property line. A lot of times, it depends on how many acres. If you have less than half an acre, there's one standard. If you have more than half an acre but less than an acre, there's another standard. It can be graduated. But that's one set of issues that we would want to look at. Also, are there any sensitive receptors, such as schools, churches, parks, school bus stops, you know, things like that, where we'd want a certain number of feet, sometimes it's 500, I've seen 600, I've seen 1,000. We want a certain number of feet from a school bus stop, for instance, in the site where the marijuana is being grown. Other ordinances I've seen actually require that the marijuana be grown in a greenhouse or a secured shed. So, you have somewhat of a hybrid of the indoor/outdoor, where you require it be outdoor, but you actually require it to be fully enclosed. And so, in some regards, it resembles an indoor grow. And so, they do this in a shed, or they do it in a greenhouse. That's one thing. Sometimes, you can require fencing, that, you know, the fencing be placed around the plants. There's also shielding, so that, you know, some of the ordinance I've seen require that no portion of the plant peek over the fence from the nearest property line, so that people walking by won't look in and see the canopy, or the top of the canopy of a marijuana plant. So, that's another level of regulation we could look at, where we not only regulate how many plants, the space of the plants, but also what measures the grower needs to employ to prevent appearances, or aesthetic issues, or odor issues. And then, finally, on top of all of that, there is the idea of a local permit. One way you could regulate is just say, here are regulations, and you can, when there's a complaint, the code enforcement officer can go out and look and see if all the regulations are met. A lot of cities find it more optimal to have a permitting scheme, where the growers need to come to the city and actually get a permit, that then allows the city to regulate grows, just like we regulate any permitted use. They have conditions, the conditions are easily verifiable, you can easily determine who's a permitted grower from a non-permitted grower. So, it becomes a little easier to administer if we have a permit scheme. But then, the flip side is, if we have a permit scheme, then we have to go through the process of setting up the permit scheme. We have to do any sort of fee resolutions to set the processing fees. We can't raise revenue yet from the permitting scheme unless we follow the various tax laws. That is one thing, I'll digress. You may hear tonight, and I've heard often, that let's just tax it, let's make a lot of money off of it. The mechanisms are not in place for city government to do that at this point. The only way we could tax marijuana is to do a special tax via propositions 13 and 218, which would be a citywide tax, and it would have to be a parcel-based tax, and it would be very difficult to administer. So, it's not that we couldn't theoretically do it, this is a practical matter, it's not feasible based on the existing law. Now, with the new state laws and regulations that are coming into effect, there may be some mechanism for the state to make that money, but as of today, there really is no basis for us to recover money and make money off of regulating cultivation. So, I understand, and again, this is an appeal, it's something I hear often in these types of meetings, but I think I want to emphasize to the council, the legal mechanisms are not there as of today. So, if that is something the council, and I didn't mention that in my staff report, but if the council- but if the council does wish to ask about that, I can follow up, but it's not really feasible. So I'll stop there, I think I've talked long enough. The overarching comment I will make to the council is remember that if, whatever you adopt, if you adopt anything, it has to be enforceable, which means our code enforcement officer needs to be able to go out and enforce it. And in my opinion, it's better to have a simpler form of regulation that is easier to enforce, that's quicker to enforce from an administrative standpoint. And so something like a plant count is probably optimal from an administrative standpoint. Having a detailed set of regulations that, you know, require all kinds of forms to be filled out and require all kinds of records and other things, that may be optimal on paper, but in my opinion, that can often be counterproductive to the enforcement process. And so again, it's not my place to tell you what policies to enact, but I certainly can bring to you my experience working with code enforcement officers who have to enforce these ordinances in the field. And I will tell you from my experience in working with them, that simple is better, at least from their, now, the industry may not feel that way, the, you know, the agency may not feel that way, the public may not feel that way, that's certainly fine. That's not my place to tell them or you what to do, but I do think it's important to know the experience in the field. So I will stop there.
Thank you, Derek. At this point, is there any member of the council that has questions of Derek based on what he's told us so far before we move on?
I have a question. You mentioned regulatory requirements. It wasn't until October that the governor established the Bureau of Marijuana Regular, I mean, Medical Marijuana Regulation. And as I understand it, the new commissioner of that group, just being assigned, has until January of 2018 to come up with a set of prescribed regulations. So what do we have to work with now preceding that if we want to consider some sort of criteria?
Well, we're not, again, the March deadline, the March 1 deadline is gone, which means that we don't face that sort of gun to the head of get your regulations in place by March 1 or else you have to take whatever we, the state, come up with. So we actually have a blank slate to work with. We can, we could do nothing, in which case we could let the issue fester and, you know, lie low until the state comes up with its regulations. Theoretically, we could ban everything outright, which we legally have the right to do, but the council, at least thus far, has said that that's not its pleasure. So really, we can pick off the menu I just talked about.
Well, let me ask a question. If we do nothing and the state does proceed and in 2018 establishes criteria, limits, all that stuff, would we be obligated then to follow that? Or would, do we still have opportunity to tweak them as we want for our own use?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. No, if we don't like what the state does and we want to be more restrictive, we would have that authority.
That's all. I have just a couple before we open it up to the public. In addition to everything you described in your, in your menu of options, can we also discuss whether we want to, if there is support to, for cultivation at all? Can it be restricted to patients cultivating or does it have to include caregivers? Can we eliminate caregiver cultivation? We have that prerogative?
Yes, yes. You, and that is a feature of a lot of ordinances is that it, you know, the, the, a caretaker, well, a patient has to live at the residence, so you can require essentially a residency requirement so that wherever you're growing, there has to be a patient there. You could also allow a care, now, in some situations, caretakers may live in a different house and they may want to grow at their own house. So that's another issue you can address. You can allow that or you can not allow that. So that's on the menu as well.
Right. Okay, and you touched on one other issue and that is by land use. So can we restrict it into like simply R1 districts or would it also need to include apartments? Could we limit it to owner-occupied R1 units only? We, do we have those abilities as well?
You could, yes, you could limit cultivation to certain zones. You absolutely have that right and prohibit them from other zones. And if you feel that from a land use standpoint cultivation in a multifamily setting is not appropriate, then that would be proper. And I think that would be advisable because it's hard to grow in such a, in such close quarters. As far as an owner occupancy, you're getting a little bit out there legally because there are, I mean, at some point renters have the right of possession. And if we just say, look, just because you rent, you can't grow, but we're going to let someone who lived, who actually owns this property grow, you might run into some unequal treatment issues there. What I've seen done and what I believe is appropriate is if a renter is growing, that they have to have assigned written, even sometimes notarized authorization form from the owner and the owner, and they have to provide that upon inspection. So my suggestion is if you want to address the renter issue is that you deal with it that way because that's very enforceable. But, you know, if we start telling people, you can do this if you own, but you can't do it if you rent, we're starting to interfere with private contractual transactions and that is kind of a no-no area for government to tread in.
Okay. That was the only questions I had. Based on the size of the audience, I suspect we're going to have several speakers so that we can work our way through this in an efficient manner. If some speaker has already articulated your point of view or made the points that you had intended to make, if you would just simply tell us that and not necessarily repeat what somebody else has said. In the past, I've been fairly generous with the amount of time that people will have to address the council. Everybody will certainly have three minutes. At the end of that, we'll try to give you a signal. And I would ask that you wrap up or conclude your remarks within the next minute. And if it goes beyond that, then there will be a point in time where I'll just simply have to ask you to resume your seat. So hopefully, you know, everybody will have a chance to, you know, be brief, be to the point, and tell us how you feel. So with that, anybody that wants to address the council, please come forward. As I said, state your name, address, and if possible, whether you live in the city.
I'm John Broder. I live at 1860 Finnegan Lane in Angels Camp. I will try to speak slowly because the reverberation in this room is, makes it difficult to hear. I am opposed to allowing any sort of growing in the city, and I will explain a little bit why. The FDA has said there is no approved use of marijuana as medicine for any medical condition as of 219, 2016. I am not opposed to any drug, marijuana or marijuana-related compound that may be available by prescription at CVS or Rite Aid or anyplace else. If it goes through the standard drug approval process, I'm all for it. I see only problems with growing your own quote-unquote "medicine." Dosage, addiction, 9% of the people that smoke marijuana get addicted to it. Theft, burglary, theft involving weapons and murders have happened on people that want somebody else's grow. We don't need this in our city. And if you happen to grow too much, addressing the number of plant issues, what happens to the excess? It ends up being very valuable. Do you put it in the compost pile? It ends up in the community somewhere. There is in place a huge approved industry with an unending number of choices, the big pharma companies. So why start another one born of the hippie, let's-get-high era that is surrounded with guns, crime, and too much untraceable cash? Now, if the ordinance for this city involves growing and for personal use only, cash will not be involved because I don't, I think it's illegal for anybody that's doing that to sell it. I would urge everyone who wants an unbiased look at the problems surrounding marijuana to go to the LA County Department of Public Health. I don't think they have any skin in the game for or against, they just look at what happens when people use. The Santa Clara County Public Health Department is the same way. They both have papers that explain the health risks. And importantly, a big piece of paper that every one of you should read, it's 182 pages, you can skim it quickly and get the gist of it, and if you want details, you can read it more closely. It's put out by the Rocky Mountain High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area. There's an acronym that goes along with that, so you can go W-W-W-R-M-H-I-D-T-A. That brings you up the homepage, you click on reports, and when you get a bunch of reports, you click on the first one, which is the third, third iteration of this report. They've done this three years in a row.
Three minutes, Mayor.
I will address what the attorney said. Indoor growing problems, indoor to outdoor is a problem of regulation, setbacks is regulation, permits is regulation, "simple is better," to quote him, and no grow is about the simplest as you can get. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, John.
My name is Reed Larson, 6266 Olds Road in Mountain Ranch. I'm on the Board of Calvaris Cannabis Alliance. First, I'd like to say that we're here to discuss not the tenants of medical marijuana, but a land use issue as it pertains to the ordinance. I would like to voice our support for the regulation of medical cannabis cultivation. Specifically, we urge the council to support individual medical cannabis rights as the city doesn't have too many properties zoned ag. The New Medical Marijuana Regulation and Safety Act allows for up to 100 square feet of canopy per patient, up to five patients or 500 square feet. The concept of a plant count is no longer recognized by the state due to the reasons the city attorney stated. CCA advocates for the adoption of state law on this matter. It was also stated that greenhouses and some ordinance require enclosed greenhouse structures with odor control. CCA believes that this is cost prohibitive to patients and would in turn just create more problems. Some viable options, reasonable regulations could include small setbacks, fencing requirements, lock requirements, some shielding. In terms of permitting, there's already a county health office program, state program as well, established in 2004, which allows a medical cannabis patient to take their recommendation within 30 days of receiving it from their doctor to the county health office with an application and an extra $100 fee. I believe it's less if you have Medi-Cal. You then receive, your application is reviewed and you receive a state-issued identification card. This could be possibly a mandatory thing that would make identification a little easier versus just requiring a medical cannabis recommendation from a doctor. Either way, CCA advocates for the adoption of state law on this matter, and thank you for your support.
Good evening. My name's Edwin Brelio. I live at 1118 Echo Street, Angels Camp. I just want to say a few things of why I believe that we should be able to cultivate marijuana in Angels Camp. First off, on an economic base, I think for numerous reasons, it brings cash flow into our community, whether it be, I don't laugh when other people have their time to talk, I'd appreciate if you didn't. Thank you.
It does, whether she wants, whether she agrees with that or not, this is my personal opinion. It does, whether you guys, whether people agree with it or not, it does, it brings cash flow into our community. These are people paying for contractors to come build their grow rooms and it's a direct stimulus to our economy. You guys are worried about security and protection? A lot of people can do an indoor grow room inside of a single-family living home. This is something that's very feasible and there's a lot of people who do this. Not to mention that if you do this, if it's an enclosed grow, it's under lock and key. It's pretty simple. Smell and appearance, this is solved by hydroponic grow indoors. There's a lot of other ways that you can do this. When we grow indoors, you have to bring air in from the outside and take it and dispose of that. So we use charcoal filters, which filters out almost all of the smell entirely. Environmental conservation, growing hydroponically, you reuse your water for at least a minimum of a week. So you're using that same water to feed plants multiple times over a period of a week. You can recycle that water, you can reuse it. It's a good way that you can conserve water, and I think it's a good way to do this. Jeez, let's see. I'd like to touch on what was said earlier, that there's no reason for this medicine. Have any of you guys had family members who've had to use cannabis? I'm sure that there's numerous people in this room who have. It has medicinal use. Let's see. Angels Camp, real true potential. This isn't LA. We're not talking about putting up warehouses. We're not talking about taking this into a large-scale production. These are people who want to exercise their right to grow, whether it be a 10-by-10 area or what the county establishes as something that's permissible. I think that that's the main thing that we need to look at. The people of Angels Camp aren't trying to take this into a real big industrial scale. The only way that you could do that is if you had rural property. You couldn't do this in a residential area. So I think for us to strip the right from people who live in a residential area to have a small cannabis grow, whether it be for medicinal use, I think that's, I think that's not right. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
No, this is your opportunity to address the council. I'm not going to, we're not going to get into a debate amongst ourselves.
I'll ask the question of you when I get out there.
My name is Kimberly McCarthy. I'm a resident of Angels Camp. I live at 253 Point Drive. I'm curious as to what they do with this water after they've recycled it and recycled it and recycled it. Does the user drink it or is it going to be put into the earth? Because it's highly chemical with fertilizers and pesticides that are beyond anything that the rural farmer uses. And that was what I wanted to ask. I am absolutely dismayed that there would be a consideration of allowing in this city or any other city the growth of a drug that's not being done by a scientific pharmaceutical company or business. As far as it bringing money, we've just heard this is for personal use and not to be sold. And that was why I found it humorous. There was a statistic said to me a week ago at a public health meeting for ASAP, which is the Alliance Against Substance Abuse. It's less than one-half of a percent of our populace that have a medical diagnosis that might allow a physician to render a prescription for marijuana use. That's not very many people, and I'll bet you they don't live in Angels Camp. It might be that the supervisors need to contact local doctors and find out how many residents in our city limits are actually using marijuana for medicinal purposes instead of just saying everybody should be able to grow their own. I'm personally very, very offended by it, and I'm sorry that it's even being discussed here. I would hate to see marijuana growing in my neighborhood, whether it's in somebody's garage or in their bedroom or in their living room or in a pot on their deck. Because if you're growing it, you're going to smoke it, and I don't want to smell it. And you can smell the chemicals. And again, I'd like to know what he's going to do with that water after it's drained through and drained through and drained through. You would not want it in your earth. You would not want it in your earth or in your waterways. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Brad Wolfman, 7230 Latigo Road in Angels Camp. I, I live in the outskirts of town, not within the city limits, but I do own two homes in the city limits of Angels Camp, rental properties. I would like to just address that issue. If you, if, I know the city council, I'm sure, has read the Merusa Law. All, all of our product is tested, it's all gotta be organic. If it's not, we can't sell it. The, the misnomer of all these chemicals is, I'm not saying it doesn't exist, but in our group...
Please, please speak into the microphone.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Talk to us.
I apologize, I apologize. I, i- i- in our group, in the group that's here today to advocate for these grows, we're not part of that. And, and, and that is another reason why, in my opinion, you know, although you guys do have two years to come up with something, it would be beneficial for you to start working on something now, I think, because I think that once you guys set up a certain amount of guidelines, it takes out a lot of this gray area that's been going on, you know, lately. And I, I know that, um, that, that she mentioned she didn't want to be, you know, live in a town with a bunch of grows, and, and I, I hate to tell you, it's, it's already here. I'm not here to advocate for commercial grows at all, especially not in, in the city of Angels Camp. But I'm here for the patients' rights, you know? I agree with the, with the city council. A plant limit, I do believe, would be the right thing. I think it would be the easiest for you guys to kind of police, maybe even also with a, a square footage limit or limitations, because I think it might be easier for you to do a permit process based upon a dollar amount per square footage. I don't know, I could be way off on this one. But, uh, I mean, as far as any of these chemicals and stuff go, I'm not saying that doesn't exist, but in the industry that's here and the people that we're talking about tonight, I, I just don't see it happening. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to address the council?
My name is Alan Surpra. I live right out of the city limits, 120 Paishon. Something that the attorney brought up was you have one code compliance officer. Check in 215s, the medical marijuana cards, to see if they're legitimate. That's gonna be in the issue, you know, to find out if that patient is truly, it, I guess you were saying that, they were saying that the person should live there at the residence, so you can confirm that. But if you guys change it to where you'd have patients taking care, providers taking care of patients there, how are you gonna able, be able to confirm that those are legitimate 215 cards? Security for that officer to go around, he's gonna tie up police officers. How many police officers do you guys have in the city? Where's that money gonna come? If something's going on, where that officer's happened to provide security and there's a big crime going on, that's gonna tie up that, that's gonna be in the issue. You're gonna need more code compliance officers, you're gonna need more police officers. It's gonna bring more crime. I think that's one of the big issues, that the city's gonna have to come up with a lot of money. They're gonna say that they're gonna provide cash for you. How are you gonna regulate? Where the money's coming from and all that stuff? I mean, if it's legitimate, I, I just think it's gonna be a big, big issue there. And where it's being grown around kids and stuff like that in the public, you know, are kids gonna be getting into that, stealing from these patients? It's gonna be a big issue. So I think it's just gonna bring out a lot of crime into the, the area. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Council staff. My name is Mike Egner. I'm a business representative for Operating Engineers Local 3, and I represent the Police Officers Association for the City of Angels, and I'm here on their behalf. I think you're hearing from your constituents out here that live inside the city. Our association wants you to consider an ordinance that would ban cultivation. Right now, marijuana's one of those things that, it's illegal federally, but yet it's legal statewide, they're so conflicting, and even your city council's brought up many, many things where, you know, you could have ordinances for this, ordinances for that. How are you gonna pay for someone to enforce these different ordinances? I think the issue council brought up, most of all, is this deadline of March 1st is not, is not there. You don't have to worry about that. But marijuana is, is, like I said, one of those unique issues. Even today, in the news, in Sacramento, they had a murder in a marijuana girlhouse. Not that that would happen here, but who knows, you know, if you bring it in here? When I think of, of what you're doing here tonight or possibility, you think of the concept of a sanctuary city. Is that what Angels Camp wants to be known as, a sanctuary city? We don't care what happens in the county. You are representing the citizens of this city, not the folks in the county. Most of these folks here, sounds like they live outside the county, out in the county, and they have areas they can grow this and do this where you want there. You already have an ordinance regarding dispensaries, so if people use it for medicine, there's a mechanism for that already. Jobs, I've heard people mention there'll be jobs. I haven't heard anybody tell you how they're gonna make money, you know, but the jobs, I mean, you can only build so many enclosures. But whatever happens here, whatever you decide to do, you all are elected by these folks, and your fingerprint is on what's done. You're the ones that are gonna be accountable for what happens. These folks elected you as their council members, and they're, they put their interests, you know, in your hands. Again, you know, the county's the county, let the county do what they want to do. I would hate to see you become what's called a sanctuary city. Marijuana, again, is one of those things, you can look at the history across the United States. And beside that, there's an election coming up in November. Who knows what's gonna happen there? And as council mentioned, you know, the state has already put regulations in that they're not gonna possibly have anything until 2018. Why do it? Put an ordinance that bans it, if you're required to do something later, change it. But your constituents, it sounds like, do not want it in their city. They don't want it growing next door. They don't want it in the shed next door. Look at the fires that you hear all the time in the news. Not that it's gonna happen, but the potential is there. Do you want to be the one that voted for this potential that could affect your citizens, the very folks that elected you? So hopefully, you know, you know, you will consider a ban on it completely. If the environment changes later down, the elections change, you always have the ability to change that. But your constituents right now, the folks that live in town, it sounds like they don't want you to do this. So I'd really, on behalf of the Police Officers Association, and they're the ones that are gonna have to deal with this. And it's already been mentioned, what's the cost gonna be? So there's many, many things that banning it will answer right now, and you won't have to deal with it, and you, you don't have the finances to deal with it. Thank you for letting me talk.
Thank you.
Ronaldo Brolio, Dogtown Road. I just want to beg, first off, I'd like to take, thank the city council for taking the time to at least consider the things that's been brought up at hand. I'm gonna play devil's advocate with John, who I admire very much and has been a good friend for a long time. I know that there's no clinical thing that says it's better for you, or it's a great medicine, or anything else. I've seen it firsthand a couple of times with people that were on their deathbed that started to use it, gave them relief. Is it gonna cure them and make them better? No, not at all. They're already on the way out at that stage, just gives them some relief. I hear a crying wolf here about what's going to happen. I don't mean to beg to differ too much here, except it's here. I have, I've been wiring these grow houses for, as an electrician, for the last five to seven years. There's tons of them in the city limits. People are doing this, the youth is there with it. I don't see any increase in crime, I don't see anything else happening from it. And these young kids and people that are doing it, they're spending their money at Clyde Nash's, buying tires and fuel and going to the Angels Food Market, just like all the rest of us. And, and the biggest point is to me, is that they're already are here and been doing. I agree with the young man, our city attorney here, you know, it needs rules and regulations that says what you can do. And I think that's the biggest issue for the city to try to consider, is the rules and regulations part in what you're gonna allow and not allow. And I think that the bulk, the bulk of them are more than willing to live within whatever bounds you give them. I'm understanding that the March 1st is no longer a deadline date from the state, so things could even be tabled and roll on. But I hate to tell you folks, but it is already here, and like I say, I've seen it firsthand and been wiring these things in for, for quite a long period of time now. And none of them are criminals, and none of them are bad people. They're all your average, everyday tax-baying citizen that's done a good job for this community in all reality. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Karen Rolhouse. I do not live in the city limits, I live in Vallesito. I do not have any weighing in on how the city takes care of this, and I only came to listen. But I do feel that I need to come up and take at least half of my three minutes and just explain to some of the people in the audience, if they are not fully aware of this yet, that there is a great need for medical marijuana. Most of you know that I just lost my 24-year-old son to brain cancer. I will be personal about this. They cut his right brain out three times, and when it grew back, the fourth time, it killed him. Neither one of us slept for two years and five months. What did help my son was not a prescription from a doctor of Maranal or anything else synthetic, but our growing the marijuana in Vallesito with our cards. I'm probably the last person you ever thought that would have a green card. And in addition, the traveling that I had to do to get some of the special medicine, he did it from Harborside down in Oakland and San Jose. I went once a month. My older son in Oregon is a grower. He is part of the movement in Oregon, and he provided a lot for my son as well. The traveling between the states. None of this has to do with what Derek talked about, and I know it's not of issue here. Medical marijuana does have a place, a very sincere and important place, and on behalf of my deceased son, I will speak for it for that 1% or that half percent that need it. My son in Oregon gives his grows all the way pro bono to brain cancer victims and patients. I appreciate the time to talk to this, and I appreciate the people that have come to speak. It is here. How you decide to regulate it will be even more important for those people like my son that suffered so greatly. And the only thing, not morphine, not Dilaudid, not Percocet, not Furosetat, none of those things helped him. But the marijuana did. It helped him sleep, it helped heal him at certain times, and it took away the stress. There is a place in this world for medical marijuana. Thank you.
Vicki Renke, 332 Catalpa.
You can pull that down if you'll.
Much better. Get off my tiptoes. Yeah, I kinda wanted to talk about, you know, where we, how we got here at this issue, which is an issue that needs to be addressed sometime in our society anyway. But it was, in 1996, we passed the Prop 215, which was a Medical Marijuana Act, and that purpose of that, and we voted for it, so it was the citizens who decided, but that it was legal to use, the use of medical marijuana for chronically ill patients. It also allowed for very small personal gross and small nonprofit co-ops to grow for a patient. That's what the law was when it started. And it was SB 2420 that also was added to that to help regulate that, okay? So that was the law, that was what was supposed to happen in the state of California. Well, over the last 20 years, everybody's just turned a blind eye, let it go. That's why we're talking today about all these people that already are growing, these in our county, there are many, many growers. For me, it doesn't make it right. Now, because of the new law that's come out, it's making us all pay attention to what's going on in our communities and what we need to do to regulate it to our liking of the public. The new law comes, the new law legalizes commercial grows. That was never in the original 1996 Prop 215. Commercial grows were never allowed, for profit was never allowed. This new law now is saying you can cultivate marijuana for profit. So it's changed the whole outlook of what we're doing in the state of California. Marijuana is still illegal in the state of California for recreational use. It isn't for medical use, and that's what we all kind of agreed on, that that was okay for people that needed it, for medical purpose. And this new law, I went and read it, and I went and looked at who voted for it, because it's always curious to me how, you know, what legislators voted, and there were several Republicans that voted for it, which I was surprised, because this new law is very liberal and very, it's, it's gonna be a problem for the state of California when it all comes to. Anyway, the, the new law came with a caveat, and that's the only reason I can understand why maybe Republicans voted for it. And that caveat is that every city and county have the right to write their own rules and regulations to meet their cities and counties' needs, and it can be more restrictive. You can ban the commercial cultivation of marijuana. That's the new issue that we're dealing with. And I know...
Three minutes, Mayor.
People I talk to, thank you, people that I talk to would like to see it banned. If we went and just followed Prop 215, what we would allow would be a patient to grow their own plants, you can come up with, maybe you let them grow four plants, you, you can make that. I think it was, in the law, it was 100 square feet, a 10-by-10. That's a lot of marijuana for one person. Or a co-op of five patients. But anyway, just going back there, we never dealt with it when it was Prop 215. Now we're dealing with a bigger issue, and we'd like to request that the board just ban all of the new law and just maybe look at what was originally acceptable for the voters in 1996. Thank you.
Kristy Reisman, 1540 Finnegan Lane, Angels Camp. I live within the city limits. Angels Camp is a tiny city. It's 367 square miles with limited infrastructure. The question is whether our limited infrastructure can and should undertake the burden that marijuana growing will put on the city. Is there even room in such a small area with 4,000 residents to accommodate any marijuana cultivation in a manner that will not endanger the vast majority of our residents who do not use or associate with the medical marijuana industry, especially our children and teens? Do not confuse the right-to-farm philosophies intended to provide healthy food essential for human survival with the production of drugs. Marijuana is not food. No one comes up from Modesto to steal tomatoes and zucchini. No one commits murder to prevent someone from snatching a few zucchinis out of a backyard vegetable garden. Do not be misled by the disingenuous arguments equating wine grapes with weed. Grapes on the vine are just food with no mind-altering capacity. The process of changing grapes to wine takes place over years in secure, enclosed buildings, and is highly regulated by multiple state, federal, and local agencies. Marijuana is a potent substance right off the plant. We citizens of Angels Camp have been on water rationing for several years now. How can we continue to meet our state-mandated reductions if this massive water use is added? Marijuana cultivation doesn't belong on residential water meters. Where will the growers get the massive amounts of water they need? Illegal water siphoning from the abandoned mine shafts might be a tempting source for them, which will endanger the stability of the whole city. Have you seen what medical marijuana gardens look like November through April? They look like garbage dumps. A mess of abandoned buckets, deteriorating hoses, and a maze of broken PVC pipes, discarded fertilizer bags strewn about. Plastic containers with toxic pesticide residue, in addition to your average trash of soda, beer cans, fast-food bags and containers, and a tangle of weeds. Is the city in a position to clean up these gardens every fall? Is the city in a position to filter the poisonous residue from pesticides and fertilizers to assure it doesn't run off into Angels Creek and Maloney's? Angels Camp in Calaveras County have always been very low-violent crime areas. October 29th, 2015, three armed men attempting to rob a marijuana grow on MGJB Ranch Road shot the marijuana grower, and a manhunt was launched for the attempted murderers. October 21st, 2015, three men from the Modesto area invaded Calaveras County with the intent to steal marijuana. The marijuana growers lived in Amador County but chose Calaveras for their grow location. They murdered the three robbers. Murder is not theoretical when it comes to marijuana. It's real, it's happened in the last six months in this county.
Three minutes, Mayor.
We do not want the city of Angels Camp to become a war zone every harvest season, and these events... and these events prove that both growers and thieves are willing to murder for marijuana. Numerous studies of random samples of medical marijuana sold in dispensaries in California conducted by UC Berkeley and UC San Francisco have shown that most contain amounts of pesticides, molds, and contaminants far in excess of those allowed on products for human consumption. Poisons put out to kill the rodents also kill pets and wildlife. It's illegal for children and teens to be exposed to medical marijuana. The city of Angels Camp has a higher duty than surrounding towns because the children of Highway 4 attend school here. The city is just too small, and marijuana cultivation in city limits is going to be too close to a school, or a park, or a library, or a church, or a recreation center to reasonably guarantee that children will not be able to see it, smell it, and access it. 3.67 miles is just too small. Calaveras County is 1,037 miles. They can grow it in the county.
Thank you, Kristy. Is there anybody else that would like to address the council?
I agree with everything that Kristy said. I've had a little experience.
And your name?
Roger Newman, excuse me, 247 Leaf Court, Angels Camp, 25 years here. Again, I agree with everything that Kristy said. I'm opposed to growing marijuana in the city. I'm opposed to selling marijuana in the city because I've seen the tremendous social cost, the personal cost that people encounter going through it. I understand what Karen had to say because I know her son and I know Karen. But that's a situation where medical marijuana under an approved doctor could be very usable to help her with, or help her son going through his pain in that. So I'm not against marijuana use for medical situation under certain circumstances. But I think it's abused terribly. I think it results in a great deal of suffering from other people. If you look at the states that have enacted the use of marijuana for recreational purposes, you will see tremendous differences in those states and the problems that they're facing. Thank you very much.
Sam Boyer, 314 South Main Street. What I wanted to say was I agree with Kristy also 100% behind what she just said. I'm not feeling too well, so I'm not going to get into a whole lot of talking. All I feel is that having a grow in Angels Camp, it's dangers to self, others, environment, and the local economy.
Greetings, members of the council. Mr. Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Matthew Clark. I live in Hathaway Pines. I'm an attorney representing marijuana clients with offices here in Angels Camp. I'd like to start off by saying that I hear a lot of people talking about, you know, the dangers of personal grows for medical marijuana, but Prop 215 was passed in 1996. Personal grows for medical marijuana have been available in the state of California for almost 20 years now. As for the dangers of water, chemicals, pesticides, and other things, it seems to me that the people that are against this new legislation don't seem to understand that there are massive support from the state for all of these issues. Water quality can be involved if you want them to be. The Department of Pesticide Regulation is ready to assist you, as is the Department of Consumers Affairs that's going to see to it that every, you know, every harvest is tested and checked for heavy metals, for pesticides, for salts, and for other contaminants like mold, et cetera. You know, as for the notion that marijuana is dangerous, my belief is that the evidence is otherwise, that it is an incredibly safe medicine, that is incredibly effective at dealing with a number of ailments. But mostly what I don't understand is why it is that that's a reason to ban it. Firearms are dangerous. There's a lot of evidence of that, and yet we register people's firearms, and we see to it that they don't wind up in the hands of felons. And based on the statistics that I've seen from Colorado, from Oregon, from Washington, et cetera, I believe that, you know, crime goes down when you regulate marijuana, and that when you regulate marijuana, you know, you make sure that it stays in the hands of people that are the good people of this county that want to use it for their own medical use, et cetera. And that if you ban it, then, you know, just like with firearms, you know, if guns are outlawed, then only outlaws will have guns. To me, in the end, this is a property rights issue. This is an individual rights issue, and this is a free market issue, and you should support those issues.
My name is Jack Lynch, 300 Selkirk Ranch in Angels Camp. I urge the council to ban the use of the cultivation of marijuana in the city. I support the majority of our citizens who oppose the growing of this product in our city, and I further support our police chief, who spoke to you early in January and pointed out the issues with respect to potential of theft, crime, odor issues, and disruption of neighborhoods. The quality of our life in our city can be mainly significantly impacted, and it would diminish the property values in the areas adjacent to homes that are growing the product. I'd like to ask a question. Have any of you on the council ever lived next door to a place where marijuana was being grown? I have a son-in-law who does live next door to a grower, and he tells me some of the experiences he's had with the odor, with all kinds of activity, days and night, in terms of the activities there, and in addition to people coming and going. Those obviously are way beyond the medical use in that family. But the enforcement of that, if you allow it to be grown, the enforcement of that then becomes an issue of calling on the police, having them to come and try to intercept people coming and going. The property values of his home and adjacent homes as a result of that growth in that neighborhood have all gone down. Who would like to live next door to a person in the city growing marijuana? I have his phone number. If any of you would like to speak to him directly, I'd be very happy to give you. I would conclude by asking the staff and the council members to please give serious thought and consideration to returning to the original ordinance, which you considered early in January, which would ban the cultivation of marijuana within our city limits. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
I'm Danny Kowchuk. I live about 800 yards outside of Angels Camp on Dogtown Road. I think education is essential here. I think before you can make your plan, whether to ban or to regulate, you have to get educated. There's a lot of misinformation that surrounds this plant. I'm an advocate for medical marijuana. I've seen it work, cancer in my family. Today, I lost my voice. Today, in the county, we heard testimony that a number of people testified about the uses of medical marijuana. One in particular testified that theirs was in fact prescribed by the University of Davis. And so, again, there's a lot of misinformation, and before you make a decision, get the facts. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Are there any other speakers that want to address the council? Okay, with that, I will close the public comment period. And now at this point, what I'm hoping that we are, there is no decision going to be made tonight in terms of adopting any ordinance or anything like that. We're simply going to try to reach agreement amongst ourselves to give direction to our city attorney or city administrator what we'd like to see going forward. And so I'm hoping that we're going to engage in some meaningful dialogue. I would ask each of the council people to tell us, tell us what they feel, and tell us why they think we all ought to feel that way. And if somebody disagrees with somebody else, then I would encourage that kind of discussion so at the end of the process, we can, we can truly try to reach some consensus. So with that, does anybody wish to go first, or?
All right, Scott?
You can look at me. Okay. My background is in the residential care facility, Care for the Elderly. There is clearly, in my opinion, a need for medical marijuana for people typically with terminal diseases or chronic diseases. It's very difficult for me because I have the federal government's hand, I can't have stuff in my facility, and I have people with doctors' prescriptions, and the state says I have to make sure that I get all their prescriptions met, so there's a catch 22. There's a big difference, though. It's a shame to me that this, this industry, if you call that, has been so abused. There is so much more marijuana being grown for medical purposes than is being used. And that, as clear as I am on the, on the need for medical marijuana, I'm as clear on that as well. So there's a big difference between having it available for proper use with doctor's orders and growing it because you have a card that says you can do so. The cost of enforcement, in my opinion, would far exceed any revenue. We're a city with a negative budget right now. I don't know that we can afford to set up a system whereby we have to go and enforce this type of a law. So now the other side is, is I don't want to stop somebody who legitimately benefits from use of this marijuana. We have a thing called palliative care. It's not a cure. It's to make somebody comfortable as they're going through difficulties, and I'm a big proponent of that. So I have, where I wrestle with this is if someone came into my house and arrested me or cited me for growing a couple marijuana plants that I use because it helps with my aches and stress and what have you, I'd feel really violated, and I don't want to create a scenario in which that's the case. So my preference would be to create a general ban of marijuana, but perhaps make a small exception for those who truly have doctor's orders and also can show that they can grow the type of marijuana that would benefit them the best. And then I can see us maybe looking the other way for a few plants, or maybe we come up with something like, you know, six plants, but not more than, you know, eight square feet or something, so don't get ridiculous. But, you know, the, I do believe this is a property rights issue, as the attorney stated. I don't believe it's a free market issue, though, because there is no infrastructure set up to regulate this properly. There is no system to generate taxes properly, and that's just a big, big burden that we'd be putting on our city to try to develop and enforce that. So that's, that's where I am right now.
Before we go on to the next speaker, let me just react to some of the things you said. I agree, I agree with you. I think enforcement is going to be a real issue. At the first time we met on this, we were briefed that this is a civil violation. It's, any enforcement would not be done by our police department, but our code enforcement officer, like it was said, we have a staff of one person, and it's going to be complaint-driven. But just think of that code enforcement officer. If, if he gets that call saying that, "I suspect there's an illegal marijuana grow site someplace, I want you to investigate." You think he should go out there by himself, or should he go with some police escort? I would not want to make a cold call to a house where there's suspected marijuana use, not knowing what's going to be on the other side of that door. So it, so it is going to involve our police department. It, it only makes good sense to give protection to our employees. And so I think enforcement is, I agree with you. I think it's going to be a big case. And in terms of, I don't think any of us want to deny anybody having access to marijuana. If, if they're a doctor, I think we have to just take it at face value. The issue is far bigger than we're going to solve tonight. If a doctor issues a medical marijuana card and says it's going to give relief to a patient, we have to accept that at face value. But we're not, we're not, by, if we institute a ban, we're not preventing that person from access to marijuana. There's dispensaries throughout the county. They can employ the use of a caregiver who can access the marijuana on their behalf or grow it on their behalf. So access or denying somebody with the medicine they need to feel better is not going to happen irrespective of what we do here. So that, those are my only comments.
And my one comeback to that is, yes, we'll have, I guess we possibly have a dispensary right here in town, but, and it will still be available. However, without insurance, without the federal government coming in there and Medicare, it costs between $6,000 to $8,000 or $9,000 a year for someone to get the prescription that, that helps them feel better. So there is that block. And, you know, again, it's a rare case, but I don't see arresting somebody or citing somebody who's growing a few plants in their house. Now, if you grow a few plants in your house and you sell it, yeah, you're done. I can't tolerate that. I wouldn't, I wouldn't go along with that at all.
Are there comments about what Scott said?
Mayor, council, I just want to clarify one point, because you've talked a lot about having one code enforcement officer, but I want to remind the council as well as the community that your code enforcement officer is also your one and only building inspector as well.
Good point. Counselor, one more.
I guess I agree with what's already been said, but I just want to say my piece, too. I see nothing but enforcement problems with the entire situation of growth of marijuana in this city. I see lengthy process for staff time and money in the code enforcer. The March 1 deadline has disappeared. It's gone. So the way I feel is the city should wait until state regulations are in place and then proceed with an ordinance if they so wish.
Comments or reaction to counsel and morris? Morris has commented. Defer to you, Dan.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay. As I stated a month ago at the city council meeting where there was a lot of outside testimony with regard to the growth of marijuana, I'm dead-set against marijuana consumption in any way, shape, or form. I think that there are probably exceptions where individuals with severe medical issues would benefit, in other words, kill the pain at their, the end-of-life kind of situations. But routine use of medical marijuana for so-called medical use is way, way, way out of control. In fact, if you look at the wording for Proposition 215, there is a list of potential witnesses or illnesses which could qualify as users, and that the very last one says, "Or any other illness for which marijuana provides relief." Now, how wide open does that provide? In 2004, we set up a more rigorous control of, I guess, an identification. In 2004, we set up a more rigorous control of, I guess, an identification of individuals who have applied for and were granted cards, as was pointed out, for medical marijuana use. If you go to the, let's see, who was it? It was, well, what agency it was, but they keep track of all the cards that have been issued since the program started. And there was three pilot counties in May of 2004, or 2005, I guess it was, as a pilot program. And then in August, the entire state, all the counties, were brought into the fold. As of November 15th of last year, there are 469 cards in the Calaveras County. Now, how many people live in Calaveras County? And of those, how many card carriers live in the City of Angels camp? I doubt seriously that there are very many. Our neighbors, Amador was one of those pilot counties. They today only have 137 card carriers. Toolumee County, 89. Lot of card carriers, right? But San Francisco, 21,627. How much space is there in, San Francisco County to grow personal marijuana? Not much. Do you think that might have influenced in 2004 the allowance of combines or cooperatives for growing marijuana for profit? I think it might have. So, yeah, the final thing that puts me where I am is the dark side. We already talked about the murders that have happened. In addition to those already mentioned, in January of this year, a 64-year-old man was gunned down in his garage in northeast Stockton. And when the police came and investigated, they found a marijuana grower in his house. Did that have anything to do with it? They didn't say in the news article that one is suspicious. The report that was identified regarding the study of the effects of marijuana in Colorado, I have all three copies of that, if anybody's interested in looking at it. And I'm, I don't consider myself uneducated about the effects and the, what's being reported with regard to the use of marijuana. I also have two kids and my wife has three siblings that live in Colorado. And for several years now, since it's been legalized, I've been hearing horror stories about what's happened. The most telling one for me is a four-year-old girl who ate the crumbled, or the leftover laced cookie and had to be taken to emergency and nearly died. That's pretty sensitive to me. So with that, I'll conclude by saying I am absolutely in favor of, like Jack says, restoring the provision for, you know, not allowing any growth in the city. Over here.
Thank you. Any comments to Bert? Vice Mayor, follow on.
I have to agree with what Scott has to say and with the mayor. I don't think we should be looking at criminalizing people just because they need it for their own use medically. I know it's a civil, civil matter, but the taboo around this, as a society, I think we need to start removing it and looking at the benefits. Unfortunately, the federal government has yet to come down to do those kinds of things for the statistics that we want in front of us tonight. However, we know what it can do. And I am not in favor of denying individuals the right to have that for their needs, whatever disease or whatever it is that they use it for. I think we also need to remember we're looking at medical, not profit, major, major cultivation as the county is looking at in other areas. And we need to start looking at where, how that will work with misuse and did that mean we're looking at how the right of farm works or yard space and indoor, outdoor. I think we just, we need more education as a council. And how we go about doing that to gather more insight how to properly regulate to best fit this city. I, I think we need to discuss how that comes about and getting that. And it's a sensitive topic. I mean, you can either be dead against it or very for it, but we need to compromise and come to a decision that works for both sides of the table. Because sitting here and ignoring the facts, we're not gonna get anywhere. I mean, it's gonna happen regardless of how we decide around us. So we need to start looking, if it's gonna happen around us, how is it gonna, and we're not doing anything, what can we do and a reaction? And I don't wanna be sitting here three, two, three years from now with not a decision and reacting to something that we don't know what could be the impact from other, other counties, cities. And I really want to encourage the council to continue the dialogue in educating ourselves on how this is gonna work.
Okay, very good. Well, let me share my feelings with this. And I was gonna try to jot down some ideas before I got here, but I, you know, I, I'm approaching this with an open mind and, you know, maybe I'll hear something tonight that'll affect my opinion. The very first time we heard this, one of the speakers talked about the issue of being careful not to make people break the law when they simply want to receive their medicine. We don't wanna adopt an ordinance that's gonna force people into having a criminal record. Well, we were told by our city attorney, this is not a criminal item. It's a civil code enforcement matter, and if somebody were cited, they would receive a citation and maybe pay a fine. And there is no criminal relationship to that whatsoever. And I, I started to think about, well, what about the, the small percentage of truly deserving patients that get relief from medical marijuana? Maybe it's a person undergoing chemotherapy and so forth. You know, I don't wanna be the one that restricts that person from the medicine they truly need. But we're not talking about restricting people's access to the drug. Medical marijuana is available in the state of California. It doesn't have to be purchased or it doesn't have to be grown within the city limits. So anything we do is not going to prevent somebody from making arrangements with somebody that lives in the county to grow on their behalf. Having it, the state law says that designated caregivers can grow for up to five of their patients. So that truly deserving person does have a means of accessing their medicine. They can buy it at a, at a canapishop. I was even under the impression that it was covered by insurance, but I was told today that's not the case, but perhaps someday in the future it will be. And if somebody, if somebody gets a prescription for medical marijuana and they need it tomorrow, they can't go out and plant a garden and expect to get results. I was told today that, under the best of circumstances, it would take four months to get any kind of production out of a plant. So that, that person, at least in the short term, is gonna have to access their marijuana through some of these other means. It doesn't have to be grown. And then I started playing these what-if scenarios. Well, what if we restricted it to, like I said, owner-occupied, single-family residences, outdoor grow areas, properly screened and shielded? So many times we talk about, you know, people exercising their individual property rights. Well, there's a couple other Rs that go with that, and that is property owners exercising responsibility and respect for their neighbors as well. And I just never could come up with a set of rules that, that would allow growing, that would not infringe upon the rights of the adjoining property owners or, or respecting the value of their property. And I started thinking about, well, what about rental properties? Can you imagine somebody growing marijuana plants on their outside second-story deck and having that all of a sudden generate dry rot and collapse under the weight of the plants in the wa, in the water, or growing it in their bathtub and it leaking to a first-floor apartment? There's just so many problems related, potential problems related to mold, mildew, having children in an apartment complex in close proximity to marijuana growers. I finally convinced myself that none of that is really practical. And so in trying to struggle with which, what is the better purpose, what is the greater good here, I am of the opinion that an outright ban of growing marijuana in the city is the best, is the best solution for all concerned. Yes, it doesn't address that small minority of people that truly deserve to have access to marijuana, and we're not suggesting that they not have access, but there's other ways of doing it. The county, I don't know what happened today, but they're, they're on the verge of adopting a very comprehensive program that addresses everything we talked about tonight, plus commercial grows and transport and so forth. I'm suggesting we start off with a total ban of medical marijuana growers. Let's see how effective the county ordinance is, what works for the county, what doesn't. And maybe we revisit this in a year or so. And if there's this overwhelming evidence that we left this segment of our population with no other means of growing, well, then maybe we can revisit it. But for right now, I think the safe bet is to go forward with a total ban. That's, that's my opinion, and I would welcome any comments to the contrary.
One thing that hasn't been mentioned, it just, it just occurred to me, I don't know why it took me so long to, the light bulb to come on. In, in my experience, the people that really benefit from the use of medical marijuana are not really in much of a position to grow it and harvest it and dry it and do everything it takes to make it feasible, much less come up with the right, was it THC, TCH, whatever it is. So I, I can support a, a total ban unless there's some other information that, that comes out. Again, the abuse, you know, if Bert says we have 489 people in the county, that probably equates to about, what, 30 people in the city limits that have legitimate cards. Of those 30, I'm curious if two or three can actually grow it on their own. So how many people are we really affecting? We're affecting the people that this, I've heard of all this money, all these millions and millions of dollars that are in our county and in our, that can come to our city. Guess what, guys? That's not medical marijuana. That's recreational marijuana. And so I, I'm leaning toward, I'd support that ban.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Sure.
For the council's identification and consideration, I would note, under existing law, the city has a, a general chapter that deals with nuisances generally. That's Chapter 2.60 of the city code. So if you go to Title II and you go to Chapter 60, you'll find several nuisances defined. Two of them, these are in paragraphs. One is Paragraph T that says, "Maintenance of premises in such condition as to be detrimental to the public health, safety, or general welfare." And then it refers to a state code. But that's declared to be a nuisance. And then also, Paragraph U says that the maintenance or use of premises which by reason of noise, dirt, odor, or other effects caused by the use of said premises diminish the livability, enjoyment, use, or property values of neighboring properties. So I do believe that if you have someone who is doing an outdoor grow and it really gets pretty significant to the point where odors are clearly crossing property lines, there's unsightliness, there's nuisances that are affecting neighbors or multiple neighbors, then we have the authority under our code as it exists to address that as purely a nuisance issue. It's not necessarily just marijuana. It's the fact that there are odors, blight, aesthetic nuisances, and interference with other people's right to enjoy their property. So I don't wanna leave the council with the impression that you, there's nothing on the books today. It's just these are very indirect ways of dealing with the issue. So for whatever that's worth, I do want, and for the public's sake, I do want people to know that when it rises to a certain level, if cultivation creates these types of impacts, we have ability irrespective of whether it's cultivation of marijuana or tomatoes or whatever, we have the authority to do something about it now.
Well, I'm not quite sure where we go from here. I would, I would hope that we could achieve unanimous consensus.
I'd like to add a comment that I forgot. Someone stated that the easiest way for the city to situate, situate ourselves now for a period of time is to completely block the growth of marijuana within the city. That it doesn't increase the enforcement issues, that all of the things that we're doing now are in place to handle what we have, okay? Anytime you take that first step to allow growth for any purpose, you now have to deal with enforcement. You, you have to deal with that aspect. And, and I think for where we are today, it's cleaner if we just ban the growth of marijuana, medical marijuana within the city.
I would agree with that as well. We're just, we're too small of a city. We live close together. We all came to this small community to enjoy the benefits of common interests, common resources, and so forth. And, and going hand-in-hand with this, we have to also respect the rights of, of our neighbors and so forth and to get into the business of allowing cultivation of a, of a plant that has so many negative effects associated with it. I think it's just counterproductive to what we're, we're all about.
I'm dead against enforcing any type of ban. I came into this workshop today hoping to be better educated on how to regulate. Prohibition didn't work. And we need, as a city, need to start researching how our current ordinance is, just like Derek mentioned, is going to lead the way to properly regulate within this city. We, we pride ourselves on being a medical county. We have a new facility coming up. We ha, we're building across the county and into San Juan. And we're gonna sit here and deny those very people the right to medical benefit, yet we're sitting here popping up facility to bring more of those people. We are also an aging community. The population, it, it gonna be, needs to have options. And with a region of baby boomers starting to go into needing medical care, we really need to start looking into this regardless of how we may feel personally. It's gonna come whether we want it or not. And we need to start looking at it, whether it's in two months, six months, a year, it's gonna, we need to come up with a decision and see how our ordinance now can better lead us into making a decision. I don't think implementing what the county is doing, they- I don't think implementing what the county is doing, they are focusing on such broader commercial and transportation, like you said earlier, but how can we do that and still provide a life for those people who need it here in this city? And I think that, I, I came in here hoping that we could look at all those resources. And if at the end of the day it doesn't work, then that's fine, but I'm not going to walk out of here tonight with the decision that I'm, I'm going to ban it because I'm not. I want to listen to what every, every side of the story is, and I'm, was hoping that the rest of the council, as well as the public, can take that first step and do it, too. I, I understand where it's coming from, that we are a small city, we are. We have neighbors back to back, but how do you, how can we mitigate that? And I think that's in our best interest and why we're sitting right here today, to do that research.
Sure.
I'd like to comment to you, Amanda. I don't think any of us said that the door is closed forever. Well, we said ban it until there are criteria in place that we can adapt or adopt. We don't need to be the ones that study it. We have, the state's going to come up with regulations, the county's going to come up with regulations, so why not wait until that's in place before we make some of those decisions?
So you're going to tell the person that needs it in two months that they need it?
They have access to it, through their dispensaries or whatever. They just, we just don't-
And do you realize the cost of it to go and buy it and purchase it versus growing? Most people do not have the financial means to go and continuously grow and buy it. And that's what I'm talking about, those types of research, we need to look at it. If we're going to ban it, okay, but what's going to happen to those patients in the meantime while they're waiting for us to make a decision?
They'll do what, they'll do what they're doing right now, excuse me, to purchase it someplace. I, I don't know if, if we're going to be able to move beyond this point.
It's not my place to tell the council how to deliberate, and obviously, this is healthy debate. What, what I would hope is that a majority of the council can give me direction if, if you want to essentially bring the ordinance that you considered before back to you, which was a ban, if you want to do nothing and let, wait and see, or if you want to do something in between, but it looks like there's some differences of opinion. So keep in mind that anything I write up is not, is for your consideration and for public comment. It will start the ordinance process all over again.
Right.
Keep in mind also that if it's a, if it's a zoning ordinance, it goes to the planning commission first. And that may be something you want to talk about as opposed to a health and safety ordinance. So I'm just looking for direction. I realize this is a thorny issue and that you're not going to resolve your differences of opinion tonight. You may never resolve your differences of opinion, so it's a difficult task that you have. You, you could also tonight, if you feel like you want to have some more time to think about this, you can continue this workshop to another meeting. You don't, you can stop now or deliberate and stop later and come back to the, this table here at a future date. So you have that option as well.
I have a comment. It, it seems like the, the differences in opinion aren't that broad. We all, I think, agree that we're not for commercial cultivation, and I think that we all understand that the cost of enforcement would exceed any revenue. A ban still requires enforcement, however. The negative, the only drawback, and Amanda, I appreciate your passion on this, is, is how do we make sure that people who, who benefit from this don't have to pay $500 or $600 or $700 a month? Because that is the cost if you, if you are prescribed this. That is how much it costs you to, to have this. So if you can't afford $500 or $600 or $700 a month and you're in your last, most of the time it's terminal illness, sometimes not, but you're, you know, you're in your waning years, maybe we need to think of fundraising instead of growing or something like that to help make it affordable for people who need this to have it. Make no mistake about it, there is a need for this. There is a need for this. A lot of people benefit, it, it ceases pain instead of morphine. Yeah, you could do morphine as well, but it knocks you on your butt and you're out for the whole day, you're in bed. Or you can, you know, you can take some marijuana and you can actually function. So it is a lifestyle benefit. It does help people. I've seen it firsthand. It's a, there's a clear benefit, but what I'm dealing with are doctor's prescriptions, proper dosages, and they're not grown it themselves. So it comes down to just a cost of, of, you know, how do we, how do we not prevent somebody from, who, who needs it from accessing it if they can't afford it? And that, to me, is the only negative to a complete ban. And if we can have some kind of discussion along those lines, how do we mitigate that one issue? Because I think we're pretty much on the same page with everything else. Wouldn't you guys agree to that?
Well, you bring up a good point, when it comes down to cost and so forth. You know, just how much can government do or what is government's responsibility to, in terms of making things affordable? I mean, where, where is the charitable community in this whole equation? Where is the religious community in the whole equation? You know, maybe they need to step forward. If it's a matter of raising money so that people can access the comfort care they need, well, then maybe that's a responsibility of that community.
That's why I brought up, maybe it's a fundraising issue. But I don't want to pass an ordinance because I like marijuana or I don't like marijuana. I think it's good, I think it's bad. It can't be about that. It's got to be about proper infrastructure, proper code enforcement, and, you know, and what's, what's good for the community. It, it can't be a, a personal issue. You know, you know, I can be for or against alcohol, for or against tobacco, for or against guns. All of these things are controversial issues, and they all have laws and regulations in place to help, you know, protect people. We're dealing with, with a new one. Who knows what's going to come down the pipe after this? But whatever we do, we have to create an infrastructure that can be properly utilized and enforced without subjective opinion.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
What, you said you were against an ordinance? How do you enforce what you just said then, without it?
Well, if we're, if we're talking about trying to give direction to our city attorney, my, my hope is that we can come up with a, I like the civil ban, the, the ban and making it a civil issue, but I do want to come up with a way to protect people from, you know, I, I don't want to stop the drugs to people who need it. And that, where you and I disagree on this is I, I do understand and see and know there's a need, and that's, that's a disagreement that we have, and so it's a bigger issue for me.
Sounds like we have a couple of options. Either, what I thought I heard was that there was a majority of people that would support a total ban at this time. There's also interest to see what we can do to make that truly deserving, or allow that truly deserving person some access to marijuana. Or do nothing and just study the issue further.
One, one way to handle this may be for me to bring back an ordinance that would essentially have a ban, but carve out a very limited right to a personal grow and bring that for your consideration. You can deal with it as you wish, but I'm not, I mean, it's not my place to, you know, try to forge consensus, but what I am hearing, I, I, I agree that there's some similarities in what you're saying. And, you know, you don't have to reconcile this tonight. I just need something to present to you. And, you know, I can, I can also structure it in such a way that I can sort of do, you know, a shell basic ordinance and then create some excerpts that you can direct me, okay, I like this excerpt, put it in, and then we can introduce the ordinance and you'll have an ordinance. So I might be able to present to you essentially the menu option, but with some actual language drafted, so that you don't have to make this decision tonight, because obviously this is the, but you, you can still consider options, and obviously, the folks who are here can come back and any, anyone else they want to bring, or anyone else who hears about it or reads about it in the papers. So maybe a, a way would be for me to bring a basic ban ordinance and then create some addenda that, you know, would address some of what you-
Very limited exceptions.
Yeah, create some exceptions that you can then consider.
Does that sound reasonable?
I'm against that. I think if we're going to ban, we're going to ban. Marijuana is accessible to those people within the city who have a justifiable need for it, okay? So I don't see personal growth as being critically important to them. That's my opinion.
And I share that opinion as well. However, for the, for the sake of, of not making a decision until it's necessary, I would support you coming back with an ordinance that, that addresses a total ban, and then with a, as an alternate or additional consideration to add to that base document, some very, very narrowly defined set of circumstances and conditions that would address Amanda's concern. And if we like it, we'll put it in. If there's a majority that like it, we'll add it to the ordinance. If there isn't that majority, then we'll just vote on the base document. Does that sound reasonable?
I'm against that, because ultimately, what you're starting to go into is, once again, regulation. You start finding those loopholes and we do the exceptions, it's still regulation. So why aren't we looking into doing that? I mean, I want to see, if we totally ban it, okay, I want to see that. If we're going to put it in regulation, I want to see what it would look like according to current ordinances on what it would, how we could regulate it. And that includes, what is the cost of enforcement, both by city staff and officers? What, what is the enforcement for building as well? I, I want to see all of it and then make a decision. I don't want to come back with one ordinance in front of me and continue to have this debate over and over again.
Again, leaving it to you, I would ask that if we, if you direct me to come back, that I can maybe bring it to the second meeting in March, so I have a little more time to work on this. Unless it, I mean, if, if it really is your preference to move this thing forward, I can have something for you on the eighth, but my preference would be to have a little more time and then if there's any-
I don't think there's any urgency, and I'd rather do it slow and, and make sure we don't have any regrets later on. Move through this slowly and so-
I would rather-
What's that?
I would rather do it slowly. I'd rather see more, I'd rather see the state regulations, what they're going to be, and find out any more facts about what's going to go with the November election. If the, if the recreational marijuana passes, I think medical marijuana will be a moot subject. I think marijuana will be all over, so, and it's going to be cheaper, I would think. I'm not in any hurry to do an ordinance. I think we ought to just leave it as it is. Things will go on as they are, and when the state comes out with their regulations and that, we can do an ordinance. I don't think anything's going to change now. People will still be able to get their medical marijuana.
You're of the opinion to do nothing at this time and just wait and see?
That's fine.
What, what's interesting about that point is that if the state does come out with their regulations, there will be that infrastructure, there will be that, the policies and procedures will be in place, and maybe we don't have to reinvent the wheel. So wait until after the, the election, see, you know, we're not in a hurry to see what happens. And the other side of it is, is if there's just a way, if there's just a way to convince me that we wouldn't nitpick people, if we, we, you know, voting the, the ban, making a civil penalty, but some way that we wouldn't nitpick someone who's just grown it for their own and minding their own business. If there was a way to do that, I would support it. But until there's a way, I, I have a hard time with it, you know?
I would, I would reiterate that if, if you, and again, I'm trying to help you with your decision-making here, not to tell you what to decide, but those provisions of your code I read earlier apply. So while they don't expressly use the terms marijuana, if anyone is using their property for a marijuana-related cultivation that is causing odors and aesthetic issues and other types of impacts to be felt across property lines in a way that really is detrimental to the community, I believe we have authority under our existing code. It's less direct, but if, if it were your pleasure as a council to wait to see what the state does, I do think there is some ability now to deal with the really bad grow sites if they pop up, even if you don't do anything in terms of a quote-unquote marijuana cultivation ordinance. So if, if, if it's a pleasure of the council or the three of you to wait, I would let you all know that that doesn't mean our hands are completely tied.
Is that a civil or criminal issue?
It's our, it's civil. It's a civil, yes. So we would enforce it civilly, we would have the authority to abate if, if it's a really bad site.
No, currently, right now-
Currently, yes.
Currently, it's a civil issue, not a criminal issue.
It's a civil, it's a civil issue, yes.
All right. In order to try to get closure, is there, is there at least three people in support of the, the idea of just wait and see what the state does?
I'm in favor.
What?
I'm in favor of waiting.
All right, I would, too.
I would, yeah.
Amanda? Okay. I think, I think you have your answer.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for participating tonight. Your input has been valuable, and, and we have one last item. And that is to review the calendar for the rest of the month.
Okay, tomorrow, the 17th, is COG-TAC at 10:30. Thursday, the 18th, at 8:30 a.m. is museum commission at the museum. Monday, the 22nd, is LAFCO. The 23rd is UWPA at 5:30. On the 25th, 10:30, is a DAC executive committee meeting. And then on the 1st, we are back here, or not here, but we are back as a, as a council.
All right. That being done, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Move. Stand second. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.